David, you can give the invocation. Okay, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, as we join together in prayer, I'm going to start with a reading of Isaiah, chapter forty, verse thirty-one. But those who hope in the Lord will renew their strength; they will soar on wings like eagles; they will run and not grow weary; they will walk and not be faint. Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we just give you thanks for blessing this county, for blessing our citizens, and Father, today, as we join in this meeting, we'd ask that you would bless our conversation. And Father, as we join in celebration, we celebrate the four H group that are here. We ask that you would be with our employees. And Father, we need to again petition you for moisture. We're terribly dry, Father, and we give you thanks for that in advance. And today, we give you that thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, good morning, everyone. As you can see, we're missing a few folks at the desk. Commissioner Pisgah is in Kansas City at the KAC State Conference along with our administrator. Both of them were there. But just the old diehards are here this morning, so we'll get her done quick. Okay, consent agenda. Need a motion, please?
I move we accept the consent agenda. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Public comments. I think Roman, you're first up.
I'm first up.
Yep.
I'm going to get after it while I can see you guys.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
First of all, Lon made me promise not to chew you out, so...
That's fine.
I want to thank you guys for serving the community and for the jobs that you do. The reason I'm here this morning is I'm asking that you guys consider putting a guardrail on the road right past my place. We've had numerous accidents there over the years. Just, I'm right at the bend in the road. If they come from the east side, they go hit the trees north of my house. If they come from the west side, they hit me on the other line and over into my neighbor's driveway and his trees. And this last one that was there here, but we've had two in the last month. And first of all, if you really look at that speed limit, that's supposed to be a thirty mile an hour speed limit. The Highway Patrol estimated the last guy that ever was going a hundred to a hundred and ten when he hit one of my trees that's twenty-four inches in diameter. It did stop him. But I mean, it's just, it's silly. We don't have any... We don't have anybody out there that I think knows how to drive, even a donkey on a cart, as bad as the people drive out there. We just get continuous violations. I didn't pay any attention this morning, but numerous times I've watched the violations out there. I'll see five or six major violations before I even get to town. And I think a guardrail wouldn't have stopped this last guy when he was going a hundred and some mile an hour. But most of them, and it really irks me the worst, is that I think in the last ten years and numerous accidents there, I've only found one guy that had insurance. And I mean, that's speaking very highly of what we're doing here as far as enforcing the law. These guys don't, some don't have insurance, they don't have a driver's license, or they're drunk, or they're a skunk. But I sure would appreciate it if you look at that and consider it, because it's right on the V. If they come, if they follow the road straight from the west, they go between me and my neighbors and go through those trees over there. One of them here about a month ago ended up through mine and into his tree. And the other one from the east, if they go straight, they hit in the trees right north of my house. But fortunately, that tree was big enough to stop him, but he messed up about three of my trees, which, you know, those trees are forty foot tall. If you go to replace them trees or try to do anything, even to move them, they're going to charge you three, four thousand dollars apiece. And the guy's got zero insurance. And I mean, that's the story of it all the time. There's no insurance, no driver's license. I don't even know that this guy owned a damn vehicle. I don't know where he got the vehicle. So you don't have to worry about it now. It's completely totaled. But he hit that tree so hard that there was parts of the vehicle, the pickup, flew over a hundred foot further past the tree. So, but look at that and consider it, and I sure would appreciate it if you'd look into that a little bit. Because we need to get something done there, and either if we aren't going to do anything with it, let's start stopping the crazy driving out there. You know, get on some of that stuff. So with that, I appreciate your time and your service, guys. Thank you.
Have you talked to Mike Warren, the sheriff, any, about this?
No, I haven't, not recently, no, so.
You might touch base with him, too, and...
Well, that is just a gravel road there, too, but I mean, if you're going a hundred mile an hour, it's going to be a little hard to make a little bend in the road, so.
Did he live?
I don't know. They flew him to Denver. He was wanted on several warrants and wanted by the federal... The feds were there, because he was wanted by the feds. But I mean, somehow in the concoction, he... The guy that was driving the pickup didn't own it legally. He'd bought it from this guy, and they didn't transfer it, followed the dang paperwork up. So no insurance. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Roman.
I'll get over here while I can see you.
Any other public comments that aren't on the agenda this morning? Okay, seen none. I guess Janet will proceed with the four H folks.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Janet Harkness. I'm the four H agent for the West Plains Extension District, which is Finney and Scott Counties. And we have come today just to give you a little update on what we've been doing and to thank you for your continued support and for Commissioner Kreitzer for coming to our meetings on a monthly basis. We really appreciate his insight into what we've got going on and what the counties got going on. West Plains four H has been extremely busy the last eighteen months. We have increased our collaborative partnership programming with Engage in the Garden City School District. We are in eight elementary schools, working with two hundred and sixty youth on a monthly basis. We also worked with a summer program through Engage. We had two sites hosting the eight elementary schools with an additional two hundred and twenty-seven four H youth. We have also increased our partnership with other youth organizations in the county, and we look forward to developing programming this year. We've increased our program numbers. We have, right now, a hundred and forty-one youth enrolled for our previous four H year, and we're recruiting, actively recruiting for this coming year. We've also increased our percentage and numbers of four H volunteers who are fully screened and enrolled and are willing to help out our youth with their different programs throughout the year. And one of our key programs this year was working with the state four H office to bring a national pilot program to southwest Kansas. We worked with the Ag Innovators Experience, and we had nine youth based out of our West Plains District, out of the twenty-seven leadership team, teens. And they presented, they learned a new curriculum that's being developed nationally that will be for sale through the four H mall this fall. And they actually presented it to a thousand youth in Kansas and then went out to Bayer Corporation in Kansas City and taught their employees the curriculum. So it was quite a neat project, and we are on track to host that project again this coming year in West Plains District. And we have four youth attending the National Four H Congress, which is pretty exciting, in Atlanta, Georgia. So we've got our youth from southwest Kansas attending National Four H programming. And one of the highlights I'd like to share with you, West Plains, Scott and Finney County, has more programming coming out of this district than any other district or county in the state of Kansas. And we were nominated for Unit of the Year, so we'll find out this week at the KSRE Annual Conference if we won. So with that, I'd just like to thank you guys and introduce, I have two of our four Hers here. I have Erin Morales and Haley Unruh from Finney County four H, and they're going to get up and tell you a little bit about their four H experience.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Erin Morales. I'm a senior in high school right now here in Garden City, and I'm entering my seventh year in four H. Now, most people think that four H is all about livestock, and while that's a huge part, there is so much more. Through my years of four H, I've explored many projects, project areas, including livestock, public speaking, arts and crafts, photography, baking, livestock judging, and meat judging. All these project areas helped me gain knowledge and individual life skills. I've learned how to stand up and give presentations, how to meet deadlines, how to become a leader, and also how to take care of animals. Four H has also taken me places and introduced me to so many people that I would have not met elsewhere. I've also had the opportunity of showing my goats in not just the state of Kansas, but also in Colorado, Oklahoma, Texas, Nebraska, and Missouri. Most recently, I've competed at national shows, Exarban in Grand Island, Nebraska, and also American Royal in Kansas City. This past spring and summer, I've had the opportunity of being part of the Ag Innovators Experience, where I got to share all about agriculture with younger kids, as well as tour the Bayer facility in Kansas City. A few of my four H career highlights were winning Division One Market Goat this year at the state fair, also being a winner of the 2022 KJLS Scholarship to continue my education in agriculture, winning third junior showman at state fair. I was also the tri-state champion market goat this year, and will get to have my name on the champion of wall. And last year, I participated in the Special Goat Olympics at the state fair while I helped special needs adults show my goat. I've also had my picture displayed at the state Capitol, imprinted in calendar and magazines. I've won showmanship numerous times at county fair, as well as breeding doe and market goat. This year, I was third place at the Meat Judger Youth Livestock Sweepstakes as well. And after graduation, I plan on continuing my love of agriculture and study animal meat science at Garden City Community College while being on the meat judging team, and I hope to go to vet school and become a large animal vet and get back to community that helped shape and support me all these years. Thank you.
Good for you for being a food animal vet. That would need more and more of them. I'm proud of you. Any questions for Erin?
Impressive. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your long-range goal, would it be to come back and be a vet in this part of the world?
My plan is to come back in this area, southwest Kansas, and become like a feed yard veterinarian to take care of the cattle.
You know, it's so often that we have this phenomenal talent and determination, because you don't get where you are with just kind of plodding along and saying, okay, what's next? But you challenge yourself to be so much more, and we need to keep that kind of talent in our community. It's just awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is Ms. Haley Unruh.
What four H can do for a little girl like me. My name is Haley Unruh. I am eleven years old and am in the fifth grade at Janie Barker. And I'm starting my fifth year in four H. Do you sometimes wonder what four H can do for little girls like me? We can't win scholarships or long trips like the older girls can, but four H can help teach us household skills that we will use as long as we live. How to wash dishes correctly, do my laundry, bake cookies, prepare simple salads and desserts, and how to use the sewing machine are all explained in the four H program, just for little girls like me. Most little girls love animals, and we learn how to love and care for them. We learn how to show others what we've learned ourselves. Four H teaches us how to judge different projects, to finish what we've started, and to keep records. And little girls like me surely like to giggle and have lots of fun. At meetings, at camps, and at fairs are the best places to have a really good time. Isn't it wonderful what four H can do for a little girl like me?
Great.
I think one of the greatest things that they've helped you do is just get the confidence to stand there and share that with us. That's really, really unique for little girls, but you're going to grow up to be a great lady. Well done.
Thank you.
Good job.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners, for your support.
Can we inquire from Janet?
Yes.
Can you give us a thumbnail sketch of how things are going under the new arrangement with the regional concept as opposed to the individual county that we had before?
Model. I think that districting has been a benefit to both Scott and Finney Counties. I think we've been able to pool our resources quite well and to get programming, vital programming, out to both communities with our five agents. There are some bugs to work out in the system with management, with just processes, you know, county versus district, which we're working with through K-State, and I think that's statewide. It's not unique to this district. But I really feel like, as a whole, that coming in, especially me coming in last year, not having a district perspective at all. I came from a single county unit in upstate New York. I think it's been very beneficial. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time in southwest Kansas. From day one, it felt like home. And the extension model that we're using out here, I think, allows us to evolve and change and to meet those needs as they present themselves in each community. There are a lot of things that we'd like to do bigger and better and different, but, you know, we need more staff to be able to fully do that, to the capacity that it deserves here in the counties. But I truly feel like the district model and sharing resources has been very beneficial to both Scott and Finney Counties.
All right, thank you.
More questions for Janet?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think watching your board meetings go on, so often when you have different entities trying to merge, a lot of the people get proprietary and say, you know, I need more here. But to see the cooperation between the board members in Scott and Finney County, and then the way the staff works, I really believe the assets are being so much better used and utilized so that they can share between all of these other different school districts.
Absolutely.
To watch it work.
Absolutely. And when I mentioned that more programming comes out of this district than any other county or district in the state of Kansas, I mean, I have two hundred and four programs that I completed this past year, singles, standalone programs. We have over a hundred and fifty total for our agents here in Finney County. We have a hundred and twenty-five programs, individual programs up in Scott County. So I mean, we, it's not uncommon for us to be out in our communities every single day of the week. Sometimes we have two or three programs a day, but we're out there meeting all of our community members and trying to make that difference in their lives.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. Do we need a motion for the proclamation, or?
Need to read it.
Well, I don't want, I'm not going to read the whole thing. We can all read. I'll read the, I'll read the "therefore." Is that fine with you, Dory?
You know, these kids are going to be disappointed if you don't read it.
No, they won't.
Tell them you'll be disappointed, won't you? Yeah, see?
Thanks. Okay. National Four H Month Proclamation for October of twenty-two. Whereas four H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly six million youth across the country. And whereas four H has helped thousands of youth in West Plains Extension District, Finney County, to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas four H, delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than one hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where the young people learn by doing through hands-on projects and in the important areas of health science, agriculture, and civic engagement. And whereas National Four H showcases incredible ways that the four H inspires kids to do and highlight remarkable four H youth in West Plains Extension District, Finney County, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas four H network of nearly five hundred thousand volunteers and thirty-five hundred professionals provide caring support and monitoring of all four Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders and entrepreneurs and visionaries. Now, therefore, I, Larry Jones, Vice Chairman, do hereby proclaim October twenty-second as National Four H Month throughout Finney County, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to recognize four H for the significant impact they have made and continue to make by empowering youth and the skills they need to lead for a lifetime.
Very good.
That was very well done.
Your background really helped you in presenting, huh?
I, you know, there's lots of old four Hers setting up here, so...
And I might expand on that. You know, I think four H is where our leaders for the future come from, a lot of them, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate the two young people today.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept this proclamation proudly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your continued support and look forward to working with you throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you for the cookies.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for the cookies.
You finish them up.
Erin and Haley, Hallie, glad to see you here.
Could we get a quick picture, Commissioners, with our four H members?
Sure.
If that's possible?
Sure. Where do they want this picture, around here?
Get that back to Dory. Or I spill coffee on it or something. Okay, McKenzie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
So before you today, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution establishing a date and time for a public hearing regarding the rural housing incentive district for Randall Estates. So as required by RHID statute, the resolution before you today establishes a date and time for a public hearing at which the development of the resolu... At which a development agreement and a resolution establishing the Randall Estates RHID will be considered. So this is the second step of the RHID process for establishing the Randall Estates addition as an RHID district. The first step was already completed and on April eighteenth of this year that identified this as a potential RHID area. The date and time proposed for the resolution is November twenty-first of twenty-twenty-two, and it says eight-thirty in your packet, but it's actually set for eight-forty. We also have voting canvassing that day, so that will go first, and then this will be the public hearing after that. A preliminary copy of the development agreement to be considered at the time is included with this memo for your review. This area has been approved by the state of Kansas to be included in the RHID program. Randall Estates is generally located at ninety-two fifty North US Highway eighty-three. The developer, Jim Randall, with Randall Estates, intends to provide sixteen lots for construction of new single-family homes. And the lots for this development will vary in size from two-point-two-four acres to approximately six-point-four-two acres. And they will, each lot will have individual wells and septic systems. So there are two alternatives before you today. The first, the governing body may approve the attached resolution, and the second is the governing body may not approve the attached resolution, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions for McKenzie?
Can we reiterate, please, Mr. Chairman, the utilities? Each lot will have its own well, did you just say?
Yes, each lot will have its own well and septic system.
And is there any movement toward trying to get the rural water district to send water that far?
There is no interest from the developer in connecting to the rural water district.
Seems a shame when you've got water district within three miles not to run a pipe.
Yeah, right now, the cost of connecting to the rural water district, though, is astronomical. It, cost of materials right now is crazy.
How far, you're saying, is three miles north?
It's... Do you know how far it is?
Seven, okay.
Seven?
That would rate. But there's water north of the bypass up toward him a ways, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've talked with them, sorry, Lon and Devol, Finney County Economic Development. We absolutely called and had a meeting with them, but it's just too far to be cost-effective for sixteen lots. Perhaps if there were a larger subdivision, it would be more, you know, would make more sense. Also, these lots are larger, so there's plenty of room for well and septic without any challenges at all. We are extending natural gas to it. However, Black Hills will do natural gas, so they don't have to have propane on their lots as well.
I'm thinking, though, sixteen water wells will pay for a lot of pipe, you know, if you stop and think about it.
Well, the individuals will pay for their own wells.
Really?
The developer, the developer can't spread the cost enough with just sixteen lots to pay for extension of rural water to district water, unfortunately.
Well, the owners of the lots may get together and combine for one well if they want to, couldn't they?
If the owners decided to do that, then they would have to, per the Finney County Environmental Code, they would have to meet the requirements for a public water supply. Yeah.
For just two, two houses, huh?
So if all sixteen lots decide to do it now, if it was per... We would have to look into that a little bit more on if they would be able to have two houses on a well. Yeah.
A specific number that kicks in in the environmental code that requires it to become a public water source and to meet those.
You had numerous people on one well, but if you had, I would, I don't know. They'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Is there then, obviously, there'll be a permitting process beyond that? I'm just looking at it with the idea of saying, okay, the guy that has lot one decides he's going to have his well on the south and his septic on the north, and the guy who's north of him then is locked out. He can't put his well on the south, and, I mean, there's got to be differentiation and stuff like that. Is the inspection, neighborhood development services, are they then in control of how each lot then does their well and septic system?
So the septic system inspections actually are performed in the public, the Finney County Public Works Department, and they have to get, pull a permit for that through the Public Works Department. And so they, we would identify then at that point where the septic system will be in relation to the well and make sure that it meets the Finney County Environmental Code.
Okay. Okay. I guess the other thing, as we go forward in this process, it would be really good if we had kind of a quote-unquote summary of what's in it for us in terms of the county the way I read until I got tired of the document. The developer builds all of the roads, and I'm assuming in accordance with county standards, and then at that point, the county quote-unquote takes over the roads and does the long-term maintenance?
So, after the completion of the roads, there is a two-year maintenance and warranty period that the developer will be responsible for maintaining the road for two years, and that helps with, so it allows for the county and for the developer to see any settling to make sure that there wasn't anything that was missed in the development of the road. And so, once after that two-year period ends, then the county takes over maintenance of those roads.
And the same kind of thing with storm drainage?
Yes.
That'll give them time, because that, it would need at least two years to make sure we have a rain. The drainage on the pattern, Duane, right?
That's optimistic there, right?
And then I'm going to go to the next step. What the next step, the hearing, is it the last step?
Yes, it is the last step, so we will have the public hearing. That gives the public and the other taxing entities an opportunity to bring any concerns before the board, and then after that public hearing is closed, then the board will review the development agreement and choose if they would like to approve it or disapprove it, and then you would also accept the plat as well.
Okay. And now that we have this format, and it's taken us, you know, a lot of months to get here, I know we have at least two other applications for RHID. Are they closer to fulfillment, or are we going to be another six months trying to get them done?
So, right now, there's two others that we're aware of that will be applying. Country Acres is currently in the process of providing us with all the information that we need to put into the development agreement, and so, once we get all of that information from the developer, then we can finish up that development agreement. And then the other one that I know of is the Ponderosa addition, which is down in Southwind, and I have reached out to the developer to get a kickoff meeting scheduled with them so that we can get the process outlined with them and let them know of what staff needs and then just kind of get the process started. So, that process has not started yet, but we have reached out to the developer.
Okay, and we have, based on what has been created in this one and our learning curve, do we have a, I'm going to call it a handout, that we can give to these other two developers that say, okay, here are all of the things we need from you to make this document come alive, so that we don't say, well, I've got everything here except, I've got everything here except, so that we make it as easy as possible for people to do business with the county?
So, when we have the kickoff meeting, we will provide the developer with a schedule of providing the whole process and the different steps of the process, and then what will need to be provided from them, and then what staff will provide, and then we also provide the template for the developer to fill out for the eligible costs that we will need to be put into the feasibility study.
Okay, so there is a packet that you can work together?
Yes.
To expedite?
Yeah, and throughout the whole process, we also provide updates for that schedule, so we'll tell them this step is now complete, this is the next step that we're going towards, it gives all of the dates, and if those dates change, then we do that, provide that for the developer.
And when you begin all of this process, it's easy then to say, okay, we're going to have a three-month interplay because we have this hurdle and then this hurdle and then this hurdle, and if you fail to provide by this time, we can't start until, so that there's no misconceptions about how long it's going to take?
Yes.
Perfect. Well done, Mackenzie, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, more?
I have a question about the resolution. Mackenzie, are you going to be taking over the lead in your position for county projects over neighborhood development, or is it still a conjunction between the two?
It's still a conjunction between the two. I've... We're still kind of working out the dynamic right now, but from my understanding, I'll be the main point of contact for a lot of developments like RHID and so on, but still, all of the permitting, the rezoning, and plating, all of that goes through the Neighborhood Development Services Department.
Having heard that, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for motion, I move we approve Resolution forty-four twenty-two that establishes the public hearing for the RHID.
Anytime.
I just did.
Okay, second?
Second.
I have a question, though.
Okay.
What we're doing with this resolution is accepting it and the premise of RHID and setting a hearing date, and that's the size of what we're doing, is it not?
Okay, the plat or anything like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, this resolution is strictly for setting the public hearing date.
Okay.
Now, the plat's already been approved, has it not? I mean, we did that several months ago.
The plat has been approved through Planning Commission, or it's been recommended for approval through Planning Commission, but it has not been approved, but it has not been brought before the board to be approved yet, and the reason for that is that our regulations do state that you need to have a development agreement in place before approving that plat.
Okay, so what we did was rezoning the last time?
Yes, yep, the property was rezoned last time.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, everybody, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Carry on. Okay. We're moving right along. Linda? Since you're the closest staff report.
Okay, we're all ready to that part. Of course, obviously, I do have to just real briefly let all of you know how much I appreciate having Mackenzie as part of that RHID. It really helped me to have immediate feedback and to be able to get that completed more quickly than I think I would have without her assistance, so thank you, Mackenzie. So, that's coming up, and then still working on the tax sale. That is a hefty project, to say the least, so I am still in the process of working on that, and I'll keep updating you as we go through on that. That's all I have to report today.
Questions? On the monthly reports, any questions, any way to direct towards staff?
Yeah, I guess, I got a couple of comments. I read with interest on Rex's. He kind of had a long list of things he's been working on and things that are causing him tremendous problems. The one I picked up on, because it fits my background a little bit better, is the LEC, the water well problem as it relates to the heating and air conditioning system on the original portion of that building. If it becomes apparent that that replacement of that system is not going to be happening in the, I'm going to call it foreseeable future, and I'm going to say a year to two years, I think they need to research an alternative of doing the cooling that the water well is currently doing, and that could be a cooling tower and another alternate source if the entire system is not going to be replaced because of dollars, funding mechanism, whatever else it is. I think it needs to come forward as a project on its own because it is a key piece, and there's only one piece, and so, when it's down, the system is down. That affects every jail cell.
It's been an ongoing challenge. I know that the maintenance of that thing has just been horrendous at times. Any more comments, monthly reports? Okay, Dory, the upcoming meetings are, I see we got one for a legislative dinner at Dodge? Yeah, appreciation dinner?
I don't have it memorized.
Okay.
You could be correct.
In Dodge City, though, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Does that mean we can't go since it's in Dodge?
No, no, I was...
No, I guess, you know, if you want to, if you guys wanted to attend, make sure and tell Dory so she can RSVP for us, and then if not, it's on the twenty, no, fourteenth, Monday. Let me look at my calendar right quick. Not a commission day or... Yep, nope. When do we canvass?
On the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
And what date is that meeting you're referencing to?
Fourteenth.
Of November?
Yeah.
Let's see it either.
Yeah, it's not on this upcoming meetings and events calendar.
Came in the, in the mail.
Oh, you got it in the mail, so I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm like, what did I miss?
Looked at all this stuff that you gave us. Well, there's a card that was laying here in front of me, so those... Other than that, I guess we'll just, you know, turn it over to Dory. Other, you got anything else you want to bring up on upcoming meetings that you want to attend that we need to RSVP for or anything, Dory?
Lana was all excited about somebody going to the chamber, State of the City speech. Any of you guys going to go do that? That's Wednesday, is it, Lana?
I'm going to go Wednesday.
Okay.
There's nothing else that I'm aware of?
Commission reports, Dave?
Boy, you caught me here, we're off guard. I don't have much to report, Mr. Chairman. We attended the employee works in service. It's impressive. Our folks need a big pat on the back for what they do, putting all of that together, and I think every employee I spoke with thought it was well worthwhile and want to do that each year. And then I attended the workforce meeting that, at the college workforce, what do I want to say, Bob?
Educational.
I just think it's workforce solutions is what we do for.
That was interesting. That's about the size of my meetings attended. I think I have library tonight, I've not seen a package yet, but at five o'clock, and then LEPC is still on for the twentieth, one-thirty, if anybody's interested, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Duane?
Uh, we, outside agency, I went to the fair board meeting Wednesday night, did not have a quorum, so the official action was taken, but a lot of good ideas. These active group of fair board members, their goal is to have the number-one fair in the state, so hopefully they get it done. Also, Thursday night is the Great Plains annual meeting, I don't know if anybody else is going to go, but I'd love to go to that.
Yeah, I think, again, I attended the in-service on Monday with the county, was very impressed with the program that Kelly had put together. Good attendance, good response to what was presented. It was really interesting to sit down and have breakfast with some of the IT people, some from the sheriff, some from the fairgrounds, and just to get their perspective on a day-to-day basis, and I think that's something that I had, I guess I hoped would have happened, and I didn't see that. I think it would be really amazing if we, as commissioners, could find ways to interact more with our employees, be it department heads or in line with people just right on down the line, because it's really exciting to see some of the energy that's out there. The Workforce Solution Group, we were really pleased, we had a little over forty people gathered, we had basically all of the entities that we judged were important. We've been able to have an interaction with some of the others. We hope to have a meeting with four-five-seven and three-six-three, our school districts, this week to meet with them and talk a little bit more about what it is they need from the business community and what kind of support. Really excited to see the commissioners there. It was good to see the, our administrator, Ann Kelly, from the HR, from the county, because I believe there is a great opportunity to have an interchange with the county people as well as the educational system. So, we're started, we're not quite sure exactly where we're going or how we're going to get there, but we've started, and I think that's the thing we need to build on. I think beyond that, we just need to keep getting engaged and stay on it. Thanks.
Well, let's see, I attended the Black Hills Energy Dinner. Good news was that they're going to have high gas to sell. Bad news is it's going to cost more, and it doesn't look like it's going to change for a little while. Also, went to a Republican meeting, local meeting, and also attended the workforce meeting with other fellow commissioners, and I was impressed that you got the local schools to all turn out, and that was what, you know, if they were there to listen to the, all the presentations and everything, I think, I think you started down a long road in being able to work through the system, work through the state's requirements and things like that, which amazed me that you were able to get that done. As an old school board member years ago, we used to have all these ideas about doing things, and then we'd run it by the state, and they'd go, no, that doesn't qualify, or you don't have it qualify for this or that, and so, it really looked like you got a good start on things. Other than that, that's all I've got to report. One more?
Before you close the meeting, do we have time for a quick question or two?
Sure.
I'm going to ask Lana for a little help. The other, at our meeting at the college, Lana, the legacy program you mentioned reminded me back when Beverly Schmitz Glass was Downtown Vision. She talked about a program like that, and it, I thought it just went away. I did not realize that you had any funding available or any scholarship or whatever, and now that we're not in a crowd of forty-one folks, can you take a moment and explain to us what you have to offer?
Yeah, well, we don't have money. We don't hold the funds to help with that, but we do connect them with resources, so largely, it's a one-off basis. We don't have a one-size-fits-all legacy program because it would probably fit one business at a time. So, what we typically do is a downtown business owner, if we're worried about downtown, would come to us and say, you know, we're thinking about transitioning out, or we want to retire, or whatever the case may be. The challenges we find specifically with the smaller retail-type businesses is that there's really not always an asset to transfer. So, a lot of times, you know, when you're talking about retailers, if somebody comes to us and says they want to, they want to retire, they want to sell their business, we have to analyze whether there's something to actually sell. Service businesses, very different. Kenny Glass is a great example of us utilizing the legacy program, and John and Nicole Hahn now own that business. So, service businesses, there's a, there's a book of business, there's typically equipment that goes along with that and those types of things, so it's easier to put together a package for financing, and we're able to help them package their business and then connect them with a buyer. And then on the other side of that, we're assisting the buyer with understanding the business and helping them to plan for the growth of the business and the sustain, you know, sustainability of it. So, again, service business is pretty easy to make those transitions happen. Retail is tougher. Oftentimes with retail, what we find is, you know, we ran into it with Finley's as a great example, they're, all they really had was their inventory. They didn't own their real estate, there's no book of business, if you will, for retailers. So, on the retail side, typically, those are just going to be, the retailer retires, they may, you know, they may sell their inventory and somebody else could go step in and run it, but it's really just the cost of the inventory that you're paying for at that point, but...
It's tough. What we were talking about was, and I use the example of Keps, one-person operation and no computerized system in that store, he does everything on a piece of paper, and talking about the workforce for, you know, for... for bigger, I mean, I got the impression mostly for bigger employers, but somehow, I would love to see a way to save folks like Keps Men's Wear. You know, he's going to retire some of these days, and it's a shame somebody can't take that over. That was all the context of this discussion, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Wait a minute, before you leave, one of the other things that came up in our workforce solutions was talking to people about staying in Western Kansas and, you know, finding different people who share, you know, where did you grow up, why did you come back, all of this. One of the better tools that was created, and it's what, several years old, was a video about life in Garden City, Finney County, and when you have something like that, it's very well done, as that one was, but it gets a little age on it, kind of like some of all of us. It loses and diminishes a little bit of its attractiveness, and so, I think it needs to be updated, and I don't know who all got together to create that, but I don't know whether, maybe at the CVB-type level Economic Development Chamber, whomever else needs to be involved. If we could take a look at it and take it apart, put it back together, because our community, the face of our community is completely different today than it was five years ago.
Yeah, so that video was called "The World Grows Here," and that was, Economic Development did take the lead on that. We wrote the script for it. We got all of the folks to volunteer to be interviewed and take part in that video, and then we contracted with Trevor Hands, and he actually put the video together for us, did all the interviews and put it together. The city of Garden City ultimately split the cost of that video with us, but that was it. That was all of the funding came from Economic Development in the city of Garden City, so we're certainly willing to do an update of it. I think it, I think it is, it's a very powerful video. If you remember, we did the full length, which is like 25 minutes, but then we also did, had him do an edited down version so that it could be, you know, used for a five or seven-minute presentation. We'd be happy to look at doing that again. I think the first time we did that, I think it was $20,000 to have that done.
When did we do that, or did you do that?
2015, probably. It was right before Nicole left Downtown Vision and came to work for us, so I think it was probably around 2015.
Time for an update.
Okay, fine, I'll do it. No, we're happy to, happy to get a quote.
In our box that we need to stay as current.
No, it is, it is very well utilized, and we also do a lot of customized workforce recruitment with different companies and entities, and we have made it where that's a QR code that if they're at a university or, you know, a career fair, whatever, somebody can walk up with their smartphone and scan that QR code, and it automatically opens the video so they can learn more about the community while they're talking to the employer. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot of value in it. We'll get on it, sir.
Thanks, Lana.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments for the good? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.